You're streaming, Allison. All right, good. Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Camden Select Board Meeting for February 23rd and 1st, 2021. Before we get into our agenda, again, I'll remind the people that we are utilizing the webinar format for our meetings at the present time. The link for that is printed every meeting on our agenda, which is on the town website, of course. You have the option of joining as an attendee, or if that doesn't work and you prefer there are also telephone connections that can be made to participate as an attendee. We do request those watching on Zoom to make comments via the Zoom connection, please, and the Q and A function would be great. And if does anybody wants to participate in an action item, raise their hand and we will try to recognize as many as we can. I'm getting feedback from something. Is it clear? Okay, good. All right, with that, we will proceed to our agenda. The first item is public input and non-agenda items, and I don't believe we have any. Is that correct, Janice?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. The second item on our agenda is the approval of the board minutes for the meetings of January 19th and February 9th. Any other board members have any comments or motion? Allison.
Um, yes, there was one spot, let me find it, where the agency NOAA, which should have been N-O-A-A, was spelled like something different, like N-O-W-A. Maybe that could just be written out as the National Oceanic and Atmospheric.
Atmospheric, yeah.
Administration, is that what it is?
I think that it is, yeah.
And then the other one was said National Fish and Wildlife should be National Fish and Wildlife Foundation. And does, am I the only one with comments?
I have a comment on the second one.
Well, you finished with January 19 comments.
I'm not, I think that that was actually the comments, not from January 19th. Not sure which one that was.
Yours was from February 9th, correct, Allison?
I believe so.
Okay, Mark, you have February 9th comment.
Yeah, why don't I make a motion first to approve the minutes as written for January 19th, 2021.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? Who's in favor? Jenna?
Hi.
Taylor.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Allison.
Hi.
And Bob, 5-0. Thank you. Now to February 9th, that's where Allison made those two titles, really. Corrections. Mark, you had more?
I had just a comment on the discussion about EMS. It was, I think, it was noted at some point that I said that Northeast Ambulance had got their staffing issue solved, and I think it was a question. I wasn't saying that they did. I was asking the question because it was answered in the next paragraph by Mr. McGinnis. So it's a question of, did they get their staffing problem fixed?
Okay.
And with that, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for, was it February 9th?
Yes.
February 9th.
Second.
Motion made in second discussion. We'll call Volley Allison.
Hi.
Hi.
Taylor.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
And Bob, I 5-0. Thank you. We have one public hearing for Oliver's Bistro at 115 Elm Street. As I've said, in the past, we've had public hearings specifically for the public to make comment on any applicant's license request or whatever it may be. And normally, we would have public input, but there's regulations therein. However, since we don't have any public input that I understand tonight, we will go immediately to deliberation by the select board. So what we have is an application of Oliver's Bistro, 115 Elm Street for the renewal of a liquor license.
I'll make a motion that we renew the liquor license for Oliver's Bistro at 115 Elm Street.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any comments? Discussion. Not hearing any roll call vote. Mark, Taylor?
Hi.
Allison?
Hi.
Jenna?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Bob, I 5-0. Thank you. With that, we close public hearing. Return to our item four, which is action items, the first of which is the approval of Vittler license for 40 paper and mixed greens. There are two entities there. They're not the same. Their information is in the packet. Are there any comments in either of those Vittler licenses request?
I will make a motion that we approve the Victorilers license, cannot say that word properly, for 40 paper and for mixed greens.
Second.
Motion made in second discussion. We'll call Taylor.
Hi.
Allison.
Hi.
Jenna?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Bob, I 4-0. We have the action being carried forward. I'm sorry. We have the approval of a hawking and peddler license for Kettle Falls. If we address, was this the information provided? Was that the extent of the application we received?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I guess just to sort of give a little context, not on this specific license, but the hawking and peddling ordinance. I think that you were all on the board when there was an amendment made to the hawking and peddling ordinance. And the intention was to give the select board discretion to grant licenses to vendors on public property. And a lot of that was sort of born out of discussions around, you know, past conversations around, I think it was primarily parks at the time, and the thought was the snowball specifically. So I think that, you know, the public landing and any, you know, consideration of what you would allow down there wasn't specified during any of those discussions. So, you know, you have a broad authority to be able to do this, but I would say that, you know, it's something that you might want to consider some sort of policy around where it is you want these things to, and how many.
Okay. Yeah, Jen?
I would make a motion that we table this item, and I guess probably before making my motion, I should have said why. And Audra kind of outlined it well. I think that this particular application is for a large period of time at the public landing. We don't have a vehicle or a trailer. It's something that the applicant is working on getting. I think that we kind of need to get our house in order before and decide what we want to do. I also would like to see a waste management plan for something like this. So I, on that note, I would make a motion that we table consideration of this license until the second meeting in March.
Makes sense to me. Second.
Motion made in second discussion. Allison, you had your agenda.
I just wanted to say that I'm definitely supportive of this kind of thing and want to, I mean, it sounds, it sounds great, and I would almost be inclined just to say, yeah, go for it. But to be responsible, we should be able to answer some more questions and talk about, you know, exactly where it's going to go. I think Jenna makes a great point about the waste. I'm sure Courtney would welcome the opportunity to flush it out a little bit more. So I definitely support tabling it, but wanted to voice my support for the idea as well.
And I should have done that, too. Thanks, Allison.
Michael. Retner.
I admire the entrepreneurial spirit of this, but if we grant one license, then all of a sudden are we open to granting to having, you know, a bunch of food trucks down there? And I'm sort of curious, we need to, I think we need to make a decision of how to handle it, and that brings me into a discussion I've been meaning to ask for a number of weeks. Where are we with the overall plan for sea level rise and the changes that are going to happen?
We're not going to address that at this point. We'll address it later, but let's, let's.
Okay, I just, let me just, I just want to say, as we discuss what we're going to do with the landing, those are things that need to be brought up before we start to make changes.
I agree, Mark. Thank you. With that, I, more discussion on this motion to table. Allison, did you handle?
I just wanted to quickly say that I'm all about planning for sea level rise, but there are certain things we can do without knowing what's going to happen with sea level rise. And this is just literally the idea of putting a food truck type thing down there that can be moved. And so this particular thing, I think, can easily be considered with no further plans for.
Yeah, I would agree with all that's been said. I think this is a great idea. It's just that from my perspective, once you approve one, there's going to be more. And we've got to be smart enough to know where this is going, especially with someplace like the landing and all of the limitations down there. That's nothing wrong with proposal. I love the idea, and we definitely want, I'm a huge fan of food trucks, but, you know, we've got to be careful where we put them and how we do that. And I think, don't think to Jenna's point, I don't think we've done our homework. That's on, that's on our plate.
That's my, I said, we need to get our house in order. I don't.
That's our thing.
Or our support for the applicant, so.
No, I'm not hearing any other comments. I'll go for roll call vote on tabling the motion to Taylor.
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Jenna?
Hi.
Allison?
Hi.
Bob, I 5-0. Thank you. Item C under action items is the approval of budget committee members for the FY '22 budget review, which, if I'm correct, Audra, it starts next Thursday, a week away.
Correct. March 4th will be the first session.
Names. Ms. McKillop.
Okay.
So proud of you.
We'll slowly, so I can write them down.
Okay, so we'll start with the one that requires disclosure. Eva Baeza is a high school student who will be turning, many of you may know her. She's been very involved in town things in the past. She will be 18 on March 17th. I'm sure she would be happy to not vote. Until then, she will be 18, obviously, when the budget is actually voted on at town meeting. To me, that would make her, you know, qualified. I don't know what the level of concern might be with somebody starting out their term on the budget committee. You know, first two meetings or whatever would be as a 17-year-old and then finishing up as an 18-year-old. She's really enthusiastic about doing it, but. So then Jill Delano, who we all got it, you know, from expressing her enthusiasm for doing it. Sarah Skrivanich and.
You got to spell that one.
Alicia Price, L-E-C-I-A, and then Price, as you would expect it to be spelled. Nancy Harmon Jenkins.
Very great.
And I've heard that confirmation that Dick Crossman has agreed.
Nancy, Dick. So that's 1, 2, 3, was Lisa's last name again, Allison?
Price.
Thank you.
Um, Sarah's husband, Andy, would also be interested in serving. He's a main guide and involved in town. I don't know what, how the board would wish to proceed with
Right.
two members from the same family, depending on how
Right.
the rest of the, you know, numbers shake out, but.
Comment, is that the list you have, Allison?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because the other one, I haven't gotten, I have a couple others I haven't gotten, definitely, yes.
Right. And we have one, I believe, please correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes.
An application, a committee application, that's Peter Alinkis, is that correct?
Correct.
That's the only other one. So that is a total of, well, depending, it's either a total of seven or eight, depending on the family situation that Allison mentioned, having two people in the same family, Andy and Sarah. So, comments, board?
I'll comment. I personally think, first of all, great job, Allison. This is impressive. I think that precedent has been set for having two members from the same family on committees. We can look at pathways as an example. I think that if, the more enthusiasm, the better. I don't know this family well, but I know them peripherally. They're wonderful. I think they're great assets. I would see no problem or conflict of interest in having two members of the same family.
Okay, any other questions? Another question I have, Allison, and I don't know the answer, because I'm not an expert. Is there any state statute that requires a budget committee member to be a registered voter?
I just looked that up myself. So the question is, I guess that I have for everyone, I think it would be fine. My only question is, since budget committee members are actually voted on at town meeting, although it wouldn't be in this case, they'd be appointed, are they considered elected officials or are they always considered appointees? Normally, in the normal process, they are actually voted, a slate recently voted on at town meeting.
Yeah.
I think it should be fine, but.
Yeah, I, I think you can always do something, and we can always check it after the meeting. That's not a problem. If we find it, in Eva Baeza's case, if we find out there's some, if there is, I don't know if there is or isn't. Actually, if we can always, you know, make a change, but.
I'd be in favor of doing it. I think that we can always just, if Bill has an issue with it, or because there's a state statute, we're unaware, we can adjudicate that later.
And I agree with the husband and wife thing. I, yeah, mixed emotions, but as long as there's no prohibition against it, I don't see where it's a big deal. This is a budget committee, not exactly, you know, deciding who's being prosecuted here. So with that, I would suggest that we have a motion to nominate these eight people. But with the only qualifier, we do need to check with the statutes, just in case there's something about having to be registered vote.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second for the discussion.
One question. If we have other people, I was expecting someone else to hopefully request being in the budget committee. We have an opportunity or a way to appoint them before next week.
I don't see how you're going to do that. I get into loosey-goosey now because we were doing this in a meeting at least, which is, you know, a formal, open agenda. We won't have another one of these until March 9th, and it's probably not wise to bring a person on a week late. That's my opinion.
We could always, we could always have a special select board meeting. I think all we would need is like three of us to demand it.
Three of us for 10 minutes, I think.
Yes.
I wonder if, could we, I mean, if Mark is certain or fairly sure that this person wants to do it, we could always appoint them, and then they can decline that appointment.
Oh, definitely.
That happens all the time, like all of you, it happens all the time with the budget committee.
Why don't you give us the person's name?
Okay, Skip Hoblin. H-O-B-L-I-N.
Say again.
Skip, S-K-I-P, Hoblin, H-O-B-L-I-N.
Okay, so if we were to revise our motion to name these nine people, and the only, well, if anybody quits, they quit. That's weird to worry about that. But again, just to double check the voter thing for Eva, that's the only qualifier.
Okay, and I'll know, I'll know tomorrow.
So, whatever, Mark, did you make the motion or you made?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
And I'll amend the motion to add the extra person.
Okay. And his motion was seconded. Jenna? I think you did good. Okay, a discussion, pre-discussion, roll call vote. Taylor?
Hi.
Allison?
Hi.
Jenna?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
And Bob, 5-0. Thank you very much. We'll get it going next week. Item D is the approval of $20,000 funding for a regional broadband study. Mark, do you want to describe that briefly?
What we've been doing, it started as a sort of a loose group with Deb Hall from Rockport, Jeremy, our planning board, a meeting, some other people from Rockport, talking about working to get fiber optical, fiber optic to all the houses in Camden and Rockport. And since then, we've had, we've had a number of towns join. And right now, it looking like it potentially be from South Thomaston all the way up to Northport, I believe, which would give us the quantity of people and towns to make it worthwhile and financially able to make this thing. So we've been talking to a consultant, and I don't have the name in front of me. And what we need to do is have the funds to hire them, but this looks like a very doable situation where we can bring fiber optic to all the residents of Camden, which I think is very important. As we've seen in the last, last year with COVID, it's something I've been working, asking about for quite a long time, but now it's really apparent is what a benefit it would be to our town to the future to do this. And so requests of the funds and some of the other towns are raising funds as well to hire the consultant to do the planning, to work towards making this a reality.
Allison, go ahead.
Was there something in our packet about this?
Say again?
Was there something in our packet about this?
I don't think there is, no.
Just a line in the.
You can talk about it a bit more.
Right, there's more to talk about.
You could just, I mean, I'm all about, every time I've heard Deb speak about this, I usually, usually get on board, but speaking, it just, it sounds a little loosey-goosey.
No, what?
Twenty thousand dollars.
It's, it's, it's not, I wish I could, I should be more specific. Jeremy can probably talk about it a little better.
Please do, Allison, would you? And we can put more flesh on the bone with this 20K and how it works with Rockport. Here he is.
There I am. Uh, thank you. I think Mark generally summed it up quite well. If you all remember, gosh, what is it? Like almost a year ago, we came to you looking for some funding to fund a broadband study that we were, that the task force was looking at with Mission Broadband. And at that time, I think we allocated, I think it was 11,000, if I recall correctly, and that was approved. We did, the task force has kind of grown, or actually, we're called the Midcoast Broadband Coalition at the present time. It's, it's a kind of a very, fairly diverse group of folks. And again, Mark said, from Northport all the way down to Thomaston, and we may be going further or looking further. And so when we initially started, it was Rockport and Camden. We looked at the numbers, working with Mission Broadband, and we decided that the, what Mission Broadband had proposed was not really in our best interests. So ultimately, we did not spend those funds. We did not sign an agreement with Mission Broadband. We held on to those funds, and we started talking more and more. We started talking to other consultants about what's going on and how to possibly make this work. If you know, and I'm sure you've heard, LCI got some CARES funding to bring fiber to almost every prem, every house. It's really still on the street, though, for Appleton and Union, Lincolnville for school purposes. They got federal funding for that. And so as we kept digging into it, it appeared, you know, working with these consultants, we need to expand our geographic range and pick up more takers. And the idea was really to make fiber available to everyone, as many people as possible, hopefully to every premises. Cheaper, faster, and better service, and that was the intent, and that was what we've been looking at all along. And as we started talking to consultants, again, it's, you need more takers, you need more people in the game, and that's just the reality of it. And so as we started talking, again, Northport was interested, Lincolnville, as much as they're tied in with LCI, and LCI is doing so much expansion in Lincolnville. The town of Lincolnville is very, very interested in doing, in being a part of this process. Northport, again, Northport, Lincolnville, Appleton, Hope, Union, Rockland is interested and engaged, Rockport, Thomaston looks like they're in, Owlshead may be in. And we're trying to look at funding to do an assessment on what it would take to bring fiber to all of, all of these communities, the midcoast area, and it is such a significant economic.
Let me, let me just add, just, we approved $15,000.
Okay, 15.
Rockport and Camden last year. It's, you haven't spent. Now, this year, Deborah and y'all, Mark is involved, and Jeremy have had discussions with, I believe it's Finley Company.
Finley Engineering and CCG.
Right.
They're the companies.
Consultings.
They talked about doing a study for our areas to give us some flesh on the bone of what needs to be done in terms of laying out the broadband network in our towns and providing some options with regard to how it might be structured from a business perspective, whether it's a utility or, and they're experts in this. And I know Deborah has already went to Rockport's board, Deborah Hall, the chair, and they approved their $20,000 additional funding to bring their funding to $35,000 total. And then this is a request to increase our funding to 35,000 total. The $70,000 will carry the lion's share of this study with, I believe it's going to be Finley. I don't, I haven't seen the proposal or anything, but that's the reason why this has been put, it's the next step.
It's the next step.
To put some flesh on the bone of the challenges that our towns have for laying out the, laying out the network and the options to operate.
Mm-hmm, exactly right. And I think right following suit will be Rockland as well and the other communities as well, because it's all part of, I think everyone understands on the select boards that in all these communities and city councils, that it is a regional issue, and we can't operate in silos trying to do this.
And we have an idea, Jeremy, on the timeframe for when they're going to do that study?
Um, I don't know off the top of my head, but as I understand, they're ready and engaged to do it.
It's probably, you're measuring this kind of a thing in months, Taylor, not in weeks.
Of course.
So I'm guessing three to five.
Right. Yep.
Allison?
Um, yeah, so I've actually watched a few of the other board meetings where they've discussed this. Deb Hall did a great presentation for the Lincolnville Select Board, and they've actually had a series of speakers over the past few weeks at their meetings. And the, the conversation has been a little bit more robust there in terms of actually defining what we're talking about. We throw out these terms like fiber, and it'll just be great if everybody has fiber. Well, my mom has fiber in Lincolnville. She just got it. And it's highly problematic because of various issues related to the service provider. And I do not have fiber on Mechanic Street, but it's much, much faster than what my mom has. So we need to really define what we're talking about. I think what they determined in Lincolnville was that they sort of, as a group, were advocating for 100 gigabytes up and 100 gigabytes down as that sort of those parallel speeds, defining what they see as kind of necessary for their residents. Nationwide, the standard for broadband is 25 megabytes down, or I'm sorry, I should have said 100 megabytes down, 100 up. I'm not gigabytes. That'd be great, though, too. The national standard is 25 up, a down, and three up. So that's what high-speed internet is defined as. So I don't know. I think it's probably at the point where we would stand, to, could stand to be a little bit better educated as a group in terms of what we're talking about. I'm highly supportive of, basically, I hate to phrase it like this, but what, whatever Deb thinks is best, because she is outstanding in her level of knowledge in this area. And I know that she, I heard her sort of give the initial pitch to Lincolnville as to where they're looking at putting the money. And she mentioned that company as seemingly better than Mission Broadband for the purposes of what we want to do and how there was a little bit more money that was going to be needed in order to do it. There wasn't a specific request in terms of dollar amount from the other towns that I'm aware of. I guess I would just be curious kind of to know what the total amount of the study is and how far by, by us committing $35,000 total to it, what percentage of the total is that? Or is that just getting us? getting us halfway there? And we're hoping to bring on a few more communities to be able to fund the full thing? Or does this get us all the way there? I, I just like a few, a little bit more info.
Well, Corinna. Mark, go ahead.
I was, I was going to say, what we should do is we should invite Matt Siegel, who's on our planning board and is also part of this committee. He's very knowledgeable about this and very involved. And he probably could give us perhaps the best explanation of.
I would say the best architect is probably Deborah Hall. All the questions Allison is, is asking, she has answers to. And this $70,000, as I understand it, is what she anticipated would be the cost of this phase one study for Camden, Rockport. And the other towns' participation was still questionable, whether they'd be involved or not. Because if they're not involved, then, you know, that's back to the decision. And I know she's gotten some numbers from Finley that were in the $80,000 range. But there was, and she sent them back to sharpen the pencil. And she felt that the 70,000 would be enough of this phase one. That's where it came from. What we could do is, and I think it's a very good point, Allison, we can approve the money, but don't allow the expenditure until we get this presentation from whomever we want it to be from. And I would still suggest to be Deborah Hall. She could find the time, because it is her passion and is her knowledge. She's far more knowledgeable here than me, for sure. And I think that would be a good way to proceed going forward. Jeremy?
Um, just to comment that we are meeting monthly, this broadband coalition, and we are recording those, so those will be available for people to listen.
I just, I just want to be in lockstep with Rockport at this point in time. We can qualify it so that, because I would agree, I, I, she gave answers to a lot of those questions to me when we had a coffee together, but I don't want to be that, you know, passing on her words. That's not fair. So I would suggest we approve the monies, but, but no expenditure until we get this clarification on, on the scope.
Yeah. And I would say it's probably going to take us a little bit of time to get that.
Yes.
Because we've got a lot, a lot coming up for the next meeting, so.
Well, isn't, isn't, is this question, is this 20K going to be in the FY 22 budget?
No, because I was, for a lot of planning-related stuff, we have a lot of money currently available. So I was going to suggest that you, you, you pay for it out of the contingency.
Okay. Well, it's your call, Board, but I would suggest we, oh yeah, we approve it and but hold these expenditures until we get the, the second step, which is the presentation. Allison, go ahead.
Thinking a little bit more, I mean, I don't, if, maybe it's not necessary for it to come to a meeting if we have a lot of if we have a lot of other stuff going on. Maybe it might be, maybe this is a good opportunity to say this is, you know, we should watch that, you know, people that are to direct Camden residents to watch other things that are already available. And if we're interested in ourselves, then we'll do that. But I don't want to saddle the agenda or hold up the process with one thing that's already been done pretty well in other places.
Yes, it has. By the way, it's not, we're not going to ask Deborah to provide us with some written explanation that we can put in a packet for info only.
Right. With maybe some links to the things that have already occurred that she thinks would be valuable?
That would be great.
Let's do that.
Okay.
Motion?
I'll make a motion, proceed to okay the money. $20,000 for broadband coalition, or Mid Coast broadband coalition. For the circuit.
Motion made in second qualifications, Allison.
And this would be out of select word contingency? Is there a difference? Are there two?
There's really no such thing as select board contingency.
But we get to decide about.
Yeah, we do.
That's why it's called.
We do.
So it is.
Hold on to that.
It's the only piece of power we have financially. But anyway, any other discussion? We'll call vote, Jenna?
Aye.
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Aye.
And Bob, aye, also five zero. Thank you. Item E on our action names, we have the approval of the Charter Commission's extension request, which would be extending their end date to March 31st, 2022. Per the letter from Chair, Jen.
I would move that we accept and their request to extend the, to to enact the extension until March, is it 31st, 2022?
Yeah, that's correct.
I would make that motion, that we approve that. Request.
Second.
Motion made in second, discussion. We'll call Taylor.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
And Bob, aye, five zero. Item F, approval of the, last time when we approved harbor fees, we did not approve the dinghy fees for FY 2122. This is an action to approve those dinghy fees. We have a, well, a memo in our packet. Do you want to explain that, Audra, please?
Sure, can someone, I did Steve, yep. He's terrified that we're going to have this
I can't wait to hear what Steve has to say about this. I, I really liked what's in the packet.
Audra, go ahead, please.
Certainly. So Steve and I had a con.
You're breaking up, Audra.
And he, and believe it or not, we have fiber here.
Knew that was coming.
LCI fiber.
I know. I'm even like, I'm not even on wireless. I'm like connection. So, um, Steve and I had a conversation about the dinghy fees and how there could be a little more work done to differentiate between the different types of vessels that are allowed on the dinghy docks. And so what we came up with was just sort of under dinghy permits, kind of remaining flat for vessels with a 20 horsepower engine or more, increasing fees by $100 on motorized vessels, decreasing fees by half. And that's the memo in your packet. And Steve can tell you a little bit more about the justification around this.
Yeah. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, we had a great conversation and, um, I know I had a conversation, Allison, with you. And it pretty much reflects that, that some people are using, well, let me, let me just back up. You know, a dinghy, we've talked about over the years, the Harbor Committee and myself, a dinghy is a small vessel to bring someone to their moored vessel. So it's going to bring them and their baggage for a five-day trip or just for the day trip. But there are people that have dinghys that have, you know, 30 horsepower engines. They fit the requirement 14 feet. So, but, you know, they got center console with all bells and whistles. So we're figuring if, if you're going to, if you're going to put a 30 horsepower, it's, it's more than a dinghy. So we should charge them more. So we're going to say it's a hundred dollars more if you have anything over 20 horsepower. And, uh, you know, I think we should, we should probably limit the horsepower. I don't know if we're going to do that now. It's something that a Harvard community and I can talk about. Hasn't been an issue yet, but it could be coming. And we've kind of wanted to reward people that, that don't have any engine at all, just a rowboat. So we were going to say ha- half the price of a dinghy if you don't have any engine.
Good, Taylor, go ahead.
Yeah, this makes perfect sense to me. I was happy when I read this as well. One clarification, I don't know if it's a typo or if there's a reason for it. So the standard dinghy permits, if I read this correctly, would be 125 for residents and 250 for non-residents. But then the dinghy permits for non-motorized vessels are reduced to 75 for residents, 200 for non-residents. So I'm just curious why the non-motorized vessels are 200 for non-residents when the standard dinghy permits are 250 for non, for non-residents?
I can't.
Oh, that was. Sorry, I, I reduced them by the roughly the same amount.
Okay, okay.
Motion to one another.
Other comments? Allison?
I think this is a great start. I would prefer to see further stratification, but we could look into that in the future. I think in addition to the, you know, setting the threshold at 20 horsepower, there's, there's really a big difference between some of the types of motors. Also, the, the impact to the harbor of these boats that all have gas tanks and engines and all of this stuff kind of like hanging out and they don't get bailed out sometimes. And sometimes the fuel drips and there's, there's a really huge difference between the impact of, say, a kayak and the impact of many of these types of vessels. So it's size and it's type of power and all of those things. But this seems like a really great start to me and I appreciate the effort.
Taylor, again.
A quick question. Steve, do, how many permits do you generally issue? What's the maximum number? And do we normally meet that? Are we turning people away usually in the summertime?
Uh, as far as dinghy permits, uh, we've never gone to capacity where we, where we've been like, ah, sorry, you can't get a dinghy permit. There's been, there's been, it's fluctuated where me and my deputies will look and say, wow, we're almost at maximum. It's, it's getting crowded, but never to the point where we had to not give a permit out. I'm sure that day is coming. But we haven't gotten it yet. Hopefully we can, you know, with the, the success from what I can tell over at, you know, the, the 10, eight to 10 dinghys over at Lake Beach, that worked out well. And if we can find new areas for people to use, you know, for dinghy storage and, and that, then I think that's how we're going to, we're going to meet the, the demand with the with coming.
Thank you.
Um, the only comment I would make is, well, the 125 is the best deal in the harbor. I can tell you the yacht club and Lemon and Morse are much more expensive for a dinghy. And they limit dinghys to 10 foot in length, period. That way naturally, then naturally controls the size of the motor. You don't put a 40 horsepower motor on a 10-foot dinghy. I believe the yacht club is at 150 or 200, depending on the location in the yacht club. And I believe Lemon and Morse is up at the same amount. And they're dinghy, and by the way, in both cases, they're dinghy only. And yes, rowboats are allowed, but they pay the same amount. Anyway, I think this proposal is, 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 I think we're making it more complicated. It has to be, but I can understand the cross-section, what you all worked out. Allison, go ahead.
I think we're making it less complicated than it should be actually. But, so some of these dories, for instance, that we have that are non, might be a little bit longer than 10 feet, but non-motorized and the type of thing that, you know, somebody has been using for years and years and years and really has very little negative impact. So it, it does get a little bit more complicated. One just quick thing that I can't resist asking, what do we, where do electric motors fall into all of it?
I was going to bring that up, and I thought you were going to bring that up. I think we have about three, there's three electric motors and they're becoming more and more popular. So like you said, this is a good start. And I think next year we'll have to look at it maybe further, you know, have a, you know, stratification, did you say was the word? I mean, you know, because I think we should take people that are, that have electric motors and we should somehow give them a break because it's a great idea.
I mean, can we just, can put for the time being, can electric motors be in the non-motorized category? I don't believe we have any 30 horsepower electric motors out there, or they're, all the electric motors are generally very low-impact, low noise. They don't leak fuel all over the place. Maybe we can experiment with having.
That's up to you guys. I, I mean, I, I think that's a good idea. There's only four, four electric motors. You might, you might, there might be an impetus for folks to, to start looking into getting them instead of the gas, the gas engines.
I mean, the state of man, since we're supposed to be encouraging electric, electrification of everything, so.
Taylor?
I like it. I'll make a motion if we're ready.
Go.
Uh, I move that we accept the updated dinghy fees for the harbor for FY 2122 as listed in the memo from the town manager with the change that electric motors be classified as non-motorized vessels.
Second.
Discussion.
I, I do have one question. How did the electric motors, how do they charge their, their motors? Do they plug into the docks?
No, no, no. They bring them with, they bring them home and every, every other, every fourth trip and they charge them up at home and bring them back in their bags and you know, swap out the batteries.
Any other discussion? We'll call vote, Taylor?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Bob, five zero. Thank you very much. Onto the last item on our actions list, we have discussed the really, the, the next steps regarding the tenere proposals. As we all know, we've gone through two of our three phases that we had suggested some months ago. And just the phase two, which was the workshop we had on February 2nd. So this is a discussion about the options about going forward, assuming that we may be looking at the possibility of a, of a warrant for June. Mark, go ahead. Do you have a question?
Uh, well, it, in, in discussions I've had after the meeting, it was told to me that we have two items that we need to consider for this, because there was some discussion about maybe we don't make a decision and you know, we, we put all four to the town vote. But I'm aware that Bill Kelly has said that's not possible and we need to pick one. And so I'd like to have clarification from Bill about that. And that, and then the second one, Jeremy has, has made it really clear that we have some serious cleanup still to do that is not, that won't be covered by the funds that we got from the grant and it will cost a serious amount more money. So I'd like to have some clarification on that before those two, those two items.
Okay, but yeah, I agree, those items we need to clarify. But in terms of the next steps, like Board needs to consider whether or not we want to bring this to a select board meeting. And we don't have a lot of time, because if we do have any intention of doing something for June, we really got to attack this in March. Alternatively, we could consider workshops, of course, as an option. So there are, there are a number of, of those two options that really the next step. When we talked about it, we talked about phase one being, let's see, that did for us. Phase two, which was a workshop interviewing. And we received a whole bunch of questions, which I'm not sure we've answered all or not yet. But we should. And the phase three would be, as I recall, select board meeting to discuss the, the recommendation of the board. Go ahead, Taylor.
Um, yeah, just a, a sort of a side question on timeline. I think it will help us decision how to move forward. At the end of our packet for the annual town meeting, there is a schedule. My question is, on this proposed schedule, April 20th is listed on the select word approval of warrant. It is a board meeting, so I just want to confirm would the intent be that we will have on the agenda for April 20th, that will be the, the meeting at which we approve the town warrant?
That would be the meeting, that would be the last meeting we get to approve the final language after all in any hearings we have to have between now and.
Right, okay.
Because the printing, as you see, it has, the April 23rd is the, the last day that that we in town can send the actual printed word to the ballot printer.
Right. Okay. Yeah, I'm just thinking about it in terms of a drop.
Right. But backing up from that, we have, yeah, we, yeah, there are other items we have to cover in terms of considering any recommendation we're making with the warrant language is and blah, blah. And if, if we decide to do this in a select board meeting, then I believe the, one of the prerequisites for that meeting would be at least the two items of clarification that Mark mentioned. Bill's clarification on why and what statutes causes a problem with going with more than one option on the ballot. And two, Jeremy, to put the final touch of somebody to put the final opposition paper on the four proposals and their relative pros and cons regarding the cleanup of the site in terms of its overall cost and feasibility. Those are two items we really need to have very clear, so we can make more crisp decisions if we make any. So is there any disagreeing, disagreement with, with scheduling this next step to be? With, uh, scheduling this, uh, next step to be a select board meeting with the proviso without the information submitted? Taylor.
Um. I don't necessarily disagree with the idea. I guess personally, I think that the time that it would. So the last two hours that we took with those workshops, I think it was very efficient, although I do think we could have. Spent more time that would have been useful in that meeting. We got some out of it. I don't think we answered every question. Personally, I feel like it's gonna take at least another. Two to three hour meeting focused solely on, um, this subject. To get us a little bit farther forward. I don't know. I guess I don't necessarily feel that a select board. Meeting having it on the agenda in between all the other stuff is the most appropriate place right now. I feel like talk with Audra a little bit about this and, you know, um. Perhaps Bob, but I think that. I think I, I agree with Mark. It's really, I would like to hear that piece clarified, um, about. Putting multiple things in the warrant, although my personal opinion is that the select board should be putting forward one proposal to voters. That's just how I feel. Um, the. Piece about the environmental cost. Um, I think is really important. I heard a little bit more from this on, um, from Jeremy last week. And I think with so much going on, talking about the developments themselves and everything that that entails and how those meet town priorities that. The cost that's going to be associated with us to actually finish the cleanup for each. Um, proposal is sort of gotten lost in the shuffle. So I think it's really important that that be highlighted. For. Voters might have questions that. One proposal may, you know, be able to subsidize the cost of, um. Finishing cleanup or another may not, and there could be a significant. Tax burden to per cost put forward to taxpayers. From one versus another, just but on the cleanup alone. So I do think it's important. I guess I'd like to see us a specific meeting set aside for tannery again, call it a workshop again. To answer those questions, but primarily to give. People that want to attend. Their three minutes. To make a comment or ask a question. In person, so to speak, on video. That way we are really crossing our Ts and dotting our Is in terms of process.
Jenna. Um, I'm of two minds about it, as you know. Um, I think Taylor makes some really great points. I'm gonna focus elsewhere in the interest of, um, not being redundant. Uh, I would like to know what the vehicle would be for. A proposal that we, we might really like or several, but see, we want to ask more questions or, or firm up. Something that they said might be a possibility. During the, the workshop and how we would go about that or how we would take maybe public. Current or interests to our, um, to the interested parties.
Alison.
Um, yeah, I think some of. What Jenna is saying, um. Gets to what I'm thinking. It feels like. We haven't quite finished, um, what we said we were gonna do. To begin with, which I, I think we're overall doing really well by following the plan that we said we were gonna follow, but that now. Um, compiling all of the questions that we've received so far. In addition to maybe some of ours that we felt haven't been fully answered. And getting those responses in writing is. Really essential. So some of the responses would just, you know, are things that, that. We can answer, that town staff can answer, and some of them are things that. We need to follow up with the. Propusers and that's gonna be some town staff time. Going through and, and. Connecting the dots there and figuring out a way to present that all, um. Oh geez, this heating system is turning on. So I think we should do that, but I also am. Want to say I'm very supportive of trying to get something out for June. I think we should be. Prepared for the idea that, um, maybe we'll put some, you know, we'll put one thing out to voters, maybe that will fail. And then we'll put another thing out to voters and sort of have a, like a, a rapid fire. Plan so that, um, there is a mechanism for people to feel like they. Could, um. It's not just one thing or, or nothing at all, but that. It's like, okay, we're gonna try this and if there isn't consensus around this or there isn't a majority vote, then we'll try something. Else putting all, I'm not even interested in asking Bill Kelly about putting them all, all four of them. Out at once so that people can choose because. That immediately becomes really. Complicated, especially because some of them also require zoning changes. So I think we have to. Be, and you know, one of them also we would require a, um, a new TIF district. So some of these may be. Realistic to be able to put out to voters in June and others. May. Not, um, because they would require, you know, we don't want to change the zoning and then find out people didn't like. That specific proposal and they want to go back to a different proposal that. Require the other zone, so.
All right, Mark.
My, Jeremy, I'll ask you a quick question. The number I'm hearing from, um. About cleanup beyond what? We have a grant for is in the neighborhood of a half a million dollars depending on what's done at the site. Is that ballpark?
Um, before, before we get into a discussion.
Let me, let me, let me finish. Let me ask the question. Is that a ballpark figure of? What cleanup could cost over and above what the money we have right now?
Um, I think ballpark figure total, um, you're looking at probably anywhere from a half a million to depending on what the end use is. Total of half a million up to eight hundred plus thousand dollars.
Okay, okay. So that, what I'd like to do.
Understand, hold it, Mark, if I can just try to clarify that. Understand that some of, it's all based on the, the use that's there or, or the use that's proposed. And so some of those uses, like a foundation. Or parking is gonna cost X dollars. So tho- those are added into the cost. So anywhere from half a million to eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars. Regardless of which.
Let's, let's get back.
Okay, okay, that, that.
Let's get back in, Mark, we gotta get back in the discussion.
I, I know. Let me, let me finish my thought. So what I'd like to do is. Before we have a, a workshop with asking the final questions. Uh, I'd like to, I'd like them to know the cost of the particular. What they might have to come up with, uh, and know if they're available to provide some of that cost or all of that cost.
Right.
Because I don't want to make a decision on something and to find out that the town has to pay eight hundred thousand dollars for it to go ahead. So I'd like to have the, 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 the four people, you know, commenting. How they're gonna handle those costs.
And, and that way, but just a second, we already, we already stated that we would look, we would discuss possibly two position papers. A position paper would be exactly that. For each of the four proposals, it could be considered whatever the next step we decide to take. In terms of each proposal, what the cost would be, what the contribution, if any, is and that kind of a thing in that. That, uh, that document. Audra.
Um, could I make a suggestion sort of based on some things that all of you had said, um? To Allison's point, we did commit to compiling questions and submitting them to the proposers and getting answers to them. And I know, Keen Jeremy and I, we have all the questions. That have come to us via email and also that were posed at the workshop. I think that all of you, like Mark just asked. An important question that I think that we can get answers to from all the proposers. And, uh, you know, Jenna brought it up, Taylor, Allison as well. I'm sorry, this is very frustrating.
Sound fine.
Good broad being.
Yeah, so. You know, um, all of you, I think, have a lot of really good questions that. Before you're in a position where you can make some sort of decision, they need to be answered. So make a deadline for all of you getting Jeremy and I questions to submit to the proposers with everything else. Received would be Friday. Is that?
Can you send us what you have now?
Yes, yep, absolutely. I'll send you everything.
Right.
And then we can.
One, one second, one time.
I can send through everything tomorrow because it's already compiled. And sorted out based on which proposal, the question being asked.
Just to be clear, Audrey, you suggested this Friday.
That all of you give me all of the questions that you have by Friday. And then Jeremy and I can send them to the proposers and maybe we give them.
Five days.
Yep.
Five days to respond.
Okay.
And then when you get them back, um, then we can set up a date for the next. Workshop.
I like it. I. I just worry about schedule, but that's fine. That's what everyone wants.
Can I just? Ask a super quick.
Sure.
Would it be, would it make sense to put out on like, on the town's Facebook page in case members of the public haven't been. Following this process, but do really care about the tannery and I guarantee there are a lot of them. That this is what we're doing and if they have questions, please submit them by Friday, just so we have something broadly circulating. Um, just besides these that folks may or may not be watching.
And always ask, it doesn't hurt to ask.
So this is what I'll do as well. When I send you all an email with that attachment, I'll also have it posted on the website with a link and, um. I'll also, I'll link that to the, uh. As a post on the Facebook page.
Right.
So, when, when, just to be clear, when did you said that would go out? Email. With all the questions.
Tomorrow to all of you.
And Audrey, I have some questions to add to the list, so we can do that tomorrow.
Okay, so that's, that's two twenty-four and then you want, uh, uh, SB. Or anybody's comments for that matter by writing, uh, two twenty-six. End of business. And then, uh, we'll give the proposal, posers until. March five. That's, that's a following Friday.
Five business days. Yeah.
It's plenty of time.
Yeah, five business days.
I mean, keep in mind, Bob, if I don't, if you don't mind, keep in mind that this was part of the RFP. It was on the cleanup, so.
I'm just, I don't see, it is not five business days, but if you have the comments by Friday at five, you don't touch them until Monday. So, so it's four business days at most. But that's still, that's fair. Uh, that's not a problem. Taylor, go ahead.
Um, yeah, just a suggestion, thinking about, um, the concern for time, which is very valid. Um, I too would very much like to see us get something on the ballot in June. I think that, I think that people expect that.
Yep.
If we're looking at this timeline, I think it's very smart to get these questions submitted and answered. And have that wrap up by the fifth. Our next meeting is the ninth. So does it make sense tonight then to just set a date for a workshop? The week of the eighth. We can, we can. Adjust the agenda, but at least we have a police folder in there. With a time set that we can notify the, um, proposers about the week of the eighth. So that gives us the weekend then to review. Um, the answers they come back with. And then at some point that following week, we have a workshop that's already set. Because otherwise we're waiting until the ninth to then potentially set the next workshop. We should give them at least a week's notice, right? So then that means we're not looking until. The week of the sixteenth. Just a thought.
I'm not, you proposing, did we do a workshop? Did we get the eight?
I am.
Uh, my suggestion is we're looking at, um, because we have the select board on the ninth, we have budget meeting on the eleventh. So we try not to have meetings on the twelfth. So that gives us either Monday, the eighth or Wednesday, the tenth.
To the tenth.
I can't do the tenth.
Okay. Eighth.
Do I do Monday, the eighth before the select board meeting?
It's an option.
The select for me is on, yeah, the ninth.
Ninth, second reason, right. Is this an evening meeting proposing?
I'm open all day.
I, I am, I can make. The day work.
Well, I'm just thinking of, uh, if you do a workshop, we, we would have considered the public, but. But, but the public have already asked all the questions. Are we opening ourselves up for another? Raft of questions that we're gonna go through this thing ad infinitum until we make, remember the beginning of this, this process. We want to get all the public input. It's absolutely important, but it's also a very unique situation where the select board. Is, is not the final legislative body. It's the voters in, in June. So, you know, we can have, you know, the more, I'm just saying, the, the more meetings we have. Uh, for public comment, the more comments we're gonna get and have to respond to. And, and I, I just, I'm not saying we shouldn't, but, um, is this workshop intended to be, um? For us to contemplate. The various four proposals and their pros and cons. What's, what's the agenda for that workshop?
I think. I, I would get to say, I think more people are available to view in the evening than they are during the day.
Yeah, I know. I'm asked what the agenda is gonna be because I'm just trying to get clear in my mind. It's a little fuzzy about.
I feel like, um, to answer your question about I, my personal opinion is I do feel like it would be appropriate for. Um, part of whatever that next workshop is for people to be able to like, we'll be diligent about, you have three minutes. Um, you make a comment or ask a question, um, but it doesn't mean that there needs to be a laborious. Um, another two weeks that goes by while those questions gets answered. I think it's just good to be able to give people the opportunity to, maybe they just want to say. I'm in favor of this proposal and this is why. They have their three minutes and then we move on. Uh, you know, it's not gonna be more than. You know, a couple dozen people at most probably.
That part of what you just said, I, I, I totally agree with this. The part about you said. Ask questions, not just a statement about preferences.
Well, they can say whatever they want.
Well, yeah, but if your question's being asked that the developers or proposals need to answer, then we have to go back to them for answers.
I don't think we necessarily need to. I think people, I think, I think it's three minutes that people have to say their piece, whether it's in an answer format or a question, I think is up to them.
Well, then, and that'll be to your discretion as the board, like maybe somebody asks a really great question, question that you all want an answer to. Back to a developer for. It's more of just to give you all more information upon which to make a decision.
Okay, agenda.
I think if we're gonna do this, I, and I, I, as you know, Bob, I have two minds about this. Um, if we're gonna do this, I see your point about what is the agenda? I think having it be just a public forum for statements of, of support. We do our best to do our information fact finding right now, um, in this process that we've already outlined. I think we make it nice and tight. We say this is another six PM to eight PM Monday workshop. It's tight. You have your three minutes to express.
Yep, I agree. That's, that's, that's.
Well, I would move that we schedule a workshop on Monday, March eighth from six PM to eight PM for public comment only. On these, on the tannery proposals.
So we're addressing the cleanup cost kind of thing at that, at that workshop.
A second.
One question.
Yeah, Mark, go ahead. I'm sorry, Mark, Taylor, go ahead.
Um, uh, I'm in favor of that idea. I just, um, in terms of the agenda. If, if in that two hour period, it only takes an hour to get through, um, the public comment, um. Is everyone comfortable with us using the second hour if we'd like for a select for discussion with the proposals? So we can have follow up if we feel it's necessary.
Sure.
And what I would see as the natural next thing is discussing it, um, and making a decision at the meeting on the ninth.
That works.
To send forward.
Okay. March, so motion is made and seconded in the end of the discussion. Roll call, Allison.
Hi.
Taylor.
Hi.
Jenna.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Bob, I five zero. Thank you very much. Let's see, we got now the, oh, the end of action items. We have an update. On the status of various planning board projects, um, the three that are listed here, um, who's leading that discussion? Audra, Jeremy?
It's Jeremy tonight.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to update you all on some things that we're working on, um. Housing affordability and availability is obviously, obviously an issue, um, in town and across, around the mid coast, um. So the planning board is looking at options. I've had a number of discussions, workshops with them on. Lot size requirements. I've specifically kind of focused at the, um. Village extension district. Um, we have a zoning ordinance that requires minimum lot size of forty thousand square feet. On, on private septic systems. State law minimum lot size is twenty. I have heard a lot from folks. About trying to reduce the lot size to twenty thousand in the village extension to allow, um, people. At other properties, other houses on, on their, you know, out there. Um, the planning boards had some good discussions. There were not, they were not in favor of really moving things forward. Um, for June on that one specific issue because we just started talking about it. They wanted me to look holistically at housing in town and which is, I think, a great thing. Um, so we're gonna start looking at density. Um, lot size requirements, um, parking requirements in the downtown, especially as they relate to dwelling units. Um, and we're just gonna, we're starting that process. So I wanted to update you on that. So you, there's nothing going to voters on that. Um, that is about it on that discussion that I have. Uh, if you have any questions on that.
So it always sounds nice to look at things holistically. Um, it also sounds like. Exactly what is said when we're just not gonna do anything, um. And so. Considering that we've been trying to get. Planning board to address some of these issues that have been identified with a comprehensive plan and. Just make some kind of progress, um. I'm concerned that. There are so many. I'm concerned that there are so many questions. About whether there's anything that we can do to move forward right away. Is there? It seems like. There's, there are a lot of resources out there. And maybe some like outside education that, that the planning board and, I mean, even the select board for that matter. Might benefit from a lot of that stuff that we watch, learned about it, the Build Maine Conference. There are speakers that could come in to talk about kind of smart growth and urban density and. Sort of the larger goals that these zoning changes would fit into, I just, I can't, I'm having a hard time accepting that. We can't move anything forward for June, yet we've managed, like, looking at this, it's like, well, we have identified something we can do for workshops in the coastal residential zone. Which has not been identified as a town priority, I mean, it's, it's a good thing to move forward, but.
Let, let Jeremy respond, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, Allison, I totally get it, I mean, here's the dilemma that we work with, and unfortunately, it's the town meeting form of government, we have to have. We have to have final language recommendations from the planning board that has to be approved to you guys on March twentieth. March twentieth, um, and it is, we now have a full board. Um, and they're very engaged on this issue, this issue and sea level rise, and I'm going to talk to you in a little bit about that. They're very engaged and they want to move forward, and these are going to be subjects of workshops. We are going to be meeting every other week, not just doing projects, we're going to be meeting every other week, talking about housing. And sea level rise and these other issues that have been identified in the com plan. In, to get these to voters in June, it requires, and I'll tell you about the other one, and you mentioned the zoning amendment. Um, that has been asked in the coastal residential zone, the, the process to make that happen is very, it's very cumbersome, it's lengthy, and we have to start. You know, months ago to get to this point of hearings and. Especially if you're going to have lengthy discussion, which is critically important to a lot of these things, so. I wouldn't say we're just pushing this off, I mean, it's, it is something that takes a lot of time, I mean, I was really. Honestly, I was really, I was really excited about the minimum lot size requirement reduction in the village extension, and then. You know, I worked with Knox County and their GIS mapping folks, Leticia there, and we had some. She, she developed some great maps, and when we started looking at the lot sizes, how many lots would benefit from this provision? It turned out that we were in the ballpark of like twenty or so. Um, and then, you know, the planning board really started thinking about, okay, so we get twenty lots. Okay, and those are going to be rate lot, market rate lots, and they're probably going to be half a million dollar homes, does that really do anything for housing affordability, availability? So, and it's since we were talking about such few lots available out of that proposal. Um, they really said, okay, let's look, let's not forget about that one, but let's start looking at the other areas of town. Density in town, density in the existing, you know, and they look at this as building upon the accessory dwelling units or accessory apartments that we did last year. That got overwhelmingly approved by voters, so we're, it's kind of like working on a continuum as I see it.
Okay, well, what about, can, why can't we move forward with something in June that would eliminate parking requirements?
I, I can try to jam something through, no problem, I mean, it's, it's. Uh, we had that discussion in the downtown and their only concern, honestly, the planning board's concern was, they did, they wanted to exempt my. Understanding of what their opinion was, they wanted to exempt all of the downtown B one zoning. Um, from parking requirements entirely, with the exception for hotels and motels, where you have people spending the night. Um, and they did not want that to change, uh, you can look to Rockport and see what the issue with hotels and parking is. Um, and that will, that will certainly be an issue here, but I can certainly move forward on that, and I think you'll get broad support from the board.
Now, what about outside of the B one for, for like dwelling? Units and the minimum parking required for those?
Yeah.
I still, I mean, that's a big barrier, if people want to live somewhere and they want to figure out how to do without a car, then they should be able to.
Uh, I understand, um, I mean, we can talk about that, I, I, I think the reality is, is most people. I mean, I think an accessory apartment's going down to one unit or one parking space per accessory unit, I think that may be reasonable. I think the reality of two, two, you know, a regular dwelling unit, um, getting down to less than two.
Jeremy, when's your next meeting with?
I mean, people actually.
Next Thursday.
Well, timeout, one second, uh, when's your next meeting with the planning board?
Next Thursday.
Why don't you, uh, sit down with them and see what you think you can come to the table within this parking regulation in terms of.
So, so what I'm going to do, Bob, in order to, in order to do anything on this, I have to have language. In order to meet the March eighteenth public hearing date, which is, I think that's the eighteenth, which is the last day of the planning meets before. The lot have to have recommendations to you.
The timing is almost impossible.
Well, I think the parking we can deal with, and I think we can get that to the eighteenth, if I propose language for next Thursday.
Well, then you have to bring it to us by the ninth.
Um, you'll. No, they have to have planning recommendations, have to, you guys have to be, I think it's March, to you guys on. With a recommendation would be for your meeting on March twenty third.
Okay.
And we would have a hearing on March eighteenth.
Okay.
That would work.
All Allison. Amendments require two hearings, the first hearing would be the planning board, the second hearing would be with you folks.
Got it, Allison, go ahead.
I'm just having trouble, I, understanding why with all of these discussions, we haven't identified sort of lists of things that are like small and large. That town staff could be prepared to strongly advocate for as a means of achieving the goals that we've already identified, so. I, I love the idea of being able to say, well, it's going to require a lot of discussion, because everybody has to be brought on board, but when we have all this expertise. At, I mean, between you and Audra, you, you guys kind of know what we need to do in a lot of cases, that the amount of knowledge that you guys have. Is almost like a blueprint, and those things should sort of be mapped out and the, and it should, in, in some ways be the planning board's responsibility and our responsibility to. Get with the program and understand sort of the, the reasoning behind why these are recommendations from the. You know, experts who have studied this, the, the whole group think mentality of non-experts trying to come up with the best solution. I, I don't really think it's what we pay everybody to do, for us, you just to listen to a bunch of people that actually don't know as much. The, the idea that we're not comfortable. Allowing somebody to build a dwelling unit in Camden unless they reserve a parking spot for that is mind boggling, considering, I mean, we're literally saying. It's not possible for somebody outside the B one to, to, to live without a car. Well, I rent to people all the time, I share a home with people that do not drive, their only method of transportation is a bike and, or, or walking and. So it's, it's happening all over the place, why wouldn't we adjust our zoning?
We would, we would, Jeremy, but I hear Jeremy talking about trying to get something, uh, into the, a public hearing on the eighteenth.
I know, well, just pick something easy, pick something.
Well, I think he's picking parking, so that's what you suggested.
That's great.
That was, that was my intent, was to try to get that to the eighteenth.
Okay, no, I, I mean, I am happy, I am, that's on.
Mark, did you comment?
I was just going to say, we can start with the, the downtown parking B one, and then it doesn't, and then we can continue to work on stuff, but let's get something done now.
All right, Jeremy, go on with sea level rise, please.
All right. Perfect, so, um, a, and this has been talked about at great length, um, and, you know, climate change and sea level rise is not contained within our comprehensive plan anywhere, I think there's three. Three times we talk about sea level rise or climate change, it's really, really awful. So I had, um, Lauren, Lauren Cafe, who was our, uh, intern who worked for me this past summer, she had looked at other communities, we have looked at York. Saco, South Portland, Portland, Booth Bay, um, Harbor, Dam Roscada on what they have done. We have recommendations on how they have put that together, I'm, I'm sharing those with the planning board now. Um, so we're going to do that, and, and so this is really about, um, climate change and, you know, I think on the agenda it says sea level rise, I think the reality is, is climate change and sea level rise.
Understood.
And so we're going to, you know, we had talked about adding climate change and sea level rise to every chapter, and then with the planning board was like, really. What we ought to do is have a whole chapter on sea level rise and climate change. Um, and so that's the, that's the plan moving forward. Um, and when we look at that, we're going to be specifically looking at kind of characterizing and assessing the town's vulnerabilities, and that's just not town infrastructure, but that's everybody's vulnerabilities. Um, and I think just looking at the harbor and where property lines are, I think everyone understands that it's not just town, it's everybody that's impacted.
Right.
So we're going to look at that, we're going to try to identify solutions, opportunities and improvements that are needed. Um, we're going to try to look at providing technical information for property owners on ranges of adaptation strategies. And if you look at, follow this along, I mean, I've been doing climate change, participating in climate change workshops and conferences for a long time. Um, you know, you either armor, you retreat, you adapt, you make more resilient, I mean, those are all options that communities do and properties, property owners deal with. Um, so we're going to look at that, we're going to assess the applicability of flood insurance program under the National Flood Insurance Program. Uh, because if you do really start addressing comp, uh, in your comp plan and in your zoning ordinance, sea level rise and climate change, start looking at elevations. Sea level rise elevations, making that what that base flood elevation is. You really can start reducing people's, um, flood insurance rates. If you, I just lis, listen to public, I mean, I've been hearing this for the last few years, flood insurance rates are through the roof, sometimes going, you know, doubling, tripling, quadrupling every year. I was listening to public, um, NPR yesterday morning on the way into work, and again, it's this year, the FEMA is looking at increased rates again. Uh, under the flood insurance program, um, and so this is a good way to assess that and try to help people. That will require, if you follow the Lyman Morse Project through approval through that planning board process. You know, they wanted to go higher, but our height requirements are such that they couldn't go higher. Um, so we are going to look at height, height, raising the height requirement or allowance in, in, along the harbor. So that property owners can really plan for, um, sea level rise, because what we would like to see them to do, in my opinion, is. Rather than being one foot above base flood, flood elevation, be at a minimum two feet above base flood elevation when they're doing significant improvements or substantial improvements in their building. And that's one way to make properties more resilient, um, in the town, so we are working on that, um, I'm excited. The board's, I think, really engaged in it, um, this is mending the comp plan, this is not doing a new ordinance, it will have to go to voters at some point. But the planning board said, let's take this to voters, hopefully have a plan in November to take to voters, um, is the hope.
Allison.
So this stuff about, um, about changing from one to three feet above. Base flood elevation, why can't that be a quick zoning change that we could put before voters? Like, we've all, like, everybody that I've heard, we go around and around, everybody says, we should really do this, and we said it at the planning board, public, at the public hearings for the Landmark project.
We do it.
I don't understand. I know we should put it in the comprehensive plan too, and all this stuff.
Any zone change, any zoning amendments have to be consistent with your comp plan, and you have to find in the comp plan. That, that, that zoning amendment, what you're trying to do is supported by your comp plan, that's in state law.
I know, but the state is not about to come and tell us that we can't change our, make any zoning.
Property owner may, a property owner that is impacted by us deciding to raise the height. In the harbor, because they're no longer going to be able to view the harbor that they viewed forever, because we've decided to raise the height limit five feet or whatever, because sea level rise is going to. Increase five feet or potentially, what are we going to say to them, they're, they're the ones that are going to litigate it, and I don't.
Then we better just add a paragraph to our comprehensive plan right now and put it before voters in June. We just got, we just got a whole town meeting vote from people saying that they supported the recommendations of the main climate council and wanted the town to move forward with proper planning.
So another thing, I, another thing I'm looking at, Alice, I mean, it's all kind of works together, and it's the, the process of getting things to voters. And the public process is important, right?
No, but we make it take longer than it actually needs to sometimes.
We, we may, I mean, I will say, I'm on the move back board too, and we've just, the state as a board, the building code board, we've just adopted a stretch, in an, an energy code, stretch code. So that's something that I'd like the town to look at very soon, is going up well above and beyond what the minimum energy code is in the state, it, that now is allowed in the state of Maine to do that. That are into climate change and sea level rise, like South Portland, Portland, they are, have all been advocating for this, and they're moving forward with it, FALMS.
Before we get off the topic and see where it's going, the last one, do any of the board comments on this matter? You know, Jeremy, let's finish up and zone it up, we can go back for more questions if you want to.
All right, zoning map amendments and, or zoning amendments and map amendments, so we have one moving forward, zoning map amendment. That is for, that's a town in, in initiated zoning map amendment, this is for the wastewater treatment plant property, there's the far one side that is. Um, has a fair amount of development on it, um, everyone knows that property, it's, it has the, um. The round, um, tank on it, it also has the warehouse maintenance building that's down in there, that's all village zone. Um, so the plan is to rezone that B one, which is the rest of the wastewater treatment property. Um, I've talked to DEP on that issue, they have no concerns, no issues with it because of the existing development on the site. So that's moving forward, that's going to go to you guys at some point, and then hopefully the voters in June, if you guys want to hear that. Um, the, another, um, zoning amendments can be brought forward by the town, or, um. Citizens can bring zoning amendment requests forward, and we have to entertain them, and so that is one that is moving forward, we had a request from, um. Chip late, um, up on, um, up on Route one north, up at his facility by the state park. Um, he had a request, he's, he has an opportunity. That he'd like to take, you know, take advantage of, um, has to do with boat building, and, um, he brought it forward. Um, it didn't, the wording was not exactly right, the planning board had a workshop on it last Thursday, they were fully supportive. Of allowing to add tradesman shops to the CR in existing buildings that were. In existence, we do this a lot in our zoning ordinance, in existence as of January first, two thousand and three. And so this would be the large building that Chip has on that property now to add tradesman shops to that zone. Um, which already allows indoor storage, maintenance and construction of boats, we would just add tradesman shops to that. Um, and then we would add, then the proposal would be to add as a special exception. Expansions of such buildings that we're referring to, up to a total of ten thousand square feet of new area. Um, added to the building, um, as of this date, so, um, there's a proposal. Um, moving forward through that process, there's a public workshop, um, information session scheduled for next Thursday. A public hearing will be, is already been, um, voted on by the select or the planning board to hear that on March eighteenth.
Okay. Um, just.
And that is, I will say that the property, since the property owner has proposed that amendment, he does pay for, there's a zoning amendment fee and notice fee. Because we have to do notice to all the.
One of the, I'll just be, Allison, just a second, I just want to make, I, just hearing this conversation, I think. But this is a great update, first of all, we would need to understand these things, but I, you know, a, a lot of this stuff catches me cold, because I don't know where the planning board is. And Mark attends most of the meetings, he's the liaison and knows the stuff, but, um, I don't, and I, I, I think it'd be very helpful if we had. A, um, game plan, as it were, in sense of, this is what the planning board schedule is for June, for November. For, you know, and these elements, you know, that are in the queue for June or not, uh, these elements are in the queue for November, so then we can more, you know. For me, it'd be more substantive comment about what we should prioritize, um, or accelerate or decelerate in some cases. Uh, because without that, I, I'm, I'm just, you know, we, we all want to get things done for sure, and I know you do too. Um, but I, I would get you and the planning board to come up with a, uh, an action plan, as it were, and, and by element. And what, what the plan process is going out from that, we can put it in our packet and chew on it a little bit better, and we come back with more substantive comments, but to Allison.
Okay, um, could I share my screen for just a second?
Okay.
Um, okay, so the concern that I have with these amendments that we keep. Making, and we've made them a, a couple now for. The Lake property, um, is the coastal residential district encompasses a really. Broad range of properties and ecological resources. So everything that we're doing to this, this coastal residential district up here, we're also doing that to Sherman's Cove, which is arguably. Like our greatest environmental asset as a town, I mean, it, it's an oasis over there that is. Has, has major sea level rise risks, there's a huge risk of development, it's, um. So I would really like to see maybe a re, you know, complete rezoning of some of these. Maybe a re, you know, complete rezoning of some of these properties because the things that. Are really appropriate for, you know, for, for Chip Lake to do over on his property are really. Not meant to be next with anything in this area, which, you know, if you look at the work that, that. Lauren Cafe did with mapping out sea level rise and all of these different, different zones and. There's, we have, there are a lot of concerns with Sherman's Cove, so.
Jeremy respond.
Yeah, Allison, I, I very much totally get your point. And that point exactly is stated multiple times in the comp plan. And that is why the comp plan is so important. And that's why the planning board, when we have this discussion. If you go back and watch that meeting from last week, you will, you will find them talking about this very issue. And so, and even the comp plan against speaks to it. So really we have like three different. The comp plan says there are three different coastal residential districts in town and they're all very unique. It says that in the comp plan. The planning board is very aware of that and that's why we're pursuing this change. We're going to make sure that this change does not apply to other, other properties. I mean, we, the planning board gets that fully. So the intent of this is to allow existing facilities. That have these exist, this existing commercial activity in the coastal residential zone to be allowed to be expanded. It does not allow someone on Sherman's Point Road or someone down, way down Chestnut Street or maybe way down. To do what, what Chip is doing up on Route One. It, it's, it's very, it's very different zoning. I mean, the, the comp plan says these are very different locations. And we ought to look at them differently. And so I've had initial conversations with people. And the planning board about really looking at, okay, we need to actually create a coastal residential, maybe business. And a coastal something else. I mean, it's very different. So I, I'm just, I get it. The planning board fully understands. And this intention, this would not apply to existing non-commercial locations in the coastal residential zone. They're very, they were very.
And I understand that that's why we do this thing, that the pre-existing buildings as of nineteen ninety-three and blah, 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 and all of this words and thing that we do. However, it's, it's that we always seem to have time for these types of requests that are. That, you know, achieve a, a business objective, but then we never get around to doing the things. That are identified in the comprehensive plan that we really need to protect Sherman's Cove. Or we, you know, there are some things that we could do that would be equally sort of fast and easy. That would be protective and responsive to some of the comprehensive plan issues rather than. I understand that we, I, I do think, I do support trying to. Help make it possible for, for that, for Chip Lake's property to do more. It makes all the sense in the world to me. I just.
Right. This is a good point here, Jeremy. We'd come back with some, we talked about needing to change the comprehensive plan. The planning board wants to do that as a package. But what is the schedule for that? And we should, that's the kind of feedback when I say action plan. We should know what that is. And then we can, if we can always cherry pick elements that have a higher priority. But that's the kind of information in the next discussion.
Sure. And I, I get that. I think that's what I, when the planning board had this conversation, they said the same thing. And they said, let's try to plan for something for voters to November because they understand that it's a public, it's going to be a public.
Okay.
With relations piece, because when we're changing the height limits and everything else. You know, people will look at alternative issues that we're really, they're not focused on sea level rise and climate change. They're focused on their view. I mean, this is, these are, and that's just one example. Things that need to be talked about in the community and the way, the way we function.
Before we transition on, does anybody else in the select board want to make a comment in this regard in terms of priorities? Marcus, you nod your head, no. Taylor is quiet and Jenna is quiet. So I, I think it's a good conversation. I think we have to do it more often. Because I, I really do, because it's. That now armor is better with what chunks, we may be able to chunk out and get done faster versus those that may take a little bit longer. But, but thanks, Jeremy. Like I said, we're not waiting months to revisit this planning board priority thing. With that, I want to move on to a discussion, which are, when we have three, one is the, we do have the memo in our packet for the. Referendum or the secret ballot coming in, in June in the schedule. You have it to pack it. Are there any questions on that schedule from anybody on the board?
One of, one of the reasons I sort of put this on the agenda right after Jeremy gave his update was that I wanted to. You know, I, the way that I see it, there's kind of three things that. You know, we've talked about that we would really like to, you know, ensure they make it on the ballot or open town meeting. Whatever you decide to do in June. And that's, you know, the tannery question. I would like to have Tiff, Tiff District Amendments ready to go for June. And the road opening ordinance.
Those three.
Those are the three. But like I said, you know, there could be.
There are others.
Other things sort of based on, you know, some of the discussion that we just had.
Well, the, the schedule is somewhat tight, especially those that go through planning board because of the hearing process. Those that go through select board are much faster. Much more, you know, can be done much quicker. Allison, go ahead.
We could probably throw the, the flood plain ordinance and make that two level, two feet above base flood. That's not a planning board ordinance. If you want to, guys want to throw that to voters, we can do that, Allison.
Yay.
Go ahead, Allison.
In addition to that, I think we had all. Come to the consensus that we should do something to address or at least start accumulating data on a short-term rental. Issue. And I know it's probably been scary for all of us to read about. Courts discussions, but I, you know, what we were proposing and what I think we were all in agreement on. Was that we just wanted a licensing or registration requirement for. For rentals that are not owner occupied. And so it feels like. We should do that. It's all about collecting more information and knowing where all of these are. And that the next step might be something more comprehensive, that we shouldn't miss the opportunity to do what we've already agreed.
Right. I agree. That's one we have discussed. Mark, did you finger up first?
I, I would, I would agree with Allison on that. That's something I would like to see get done. It's just, it's simple. It's just registration and inspection.
Yeah, we did, we discussed this a month ago. Taylor.
Uh, agreed on that. And the question I have is that. Someone correct me if I'm wrong, but currently it is on the books for us now that short-term rentals must be a minimum of seven days, but it's just never been enforced.
That's correct.
Oh, it's very much important.
Been enforced.
It doesn't solve the problem that we're looking to solve, but some of us are looking to solve.
It could be, it could be a step forward if I guess if it had a little bit stronger teeth. And I think, I guess the point I'm getting to is that registration is a. A necessary thing to be able to hammer down on that a little more thoroughly.
Correct. Yeah, we did, we did, we did discuss this before and Alice's point is correct. We did discuss about getting it into June. Go ahead, Jeremy.
This is no problem and I'm almost there. So can you just tell me right now, if you want. You do not want to register, require any registration for any rental where the owner lives on the property, correct?
Correct.
Whether or not it's in the building, it may be in an accessory apartment on the property, I will do that. We can move forward pretty.
Let's bring that forward in a minute term, but I don't want to negotiate the term for it right now.
Well.
Not inspection. I don't think we talked about the inspection part gets.
No. We're just registering.
Right.
Oh, right. No inspections.
Okay, any other, if we have any other questions on the schedule for the June ballot?
One quick one, Bob.
Yeah, go ahead, Jenna.
I just, it's not even a question. I just want to make sure that we all know as we acknowledge this timeline, we have pieces of writing, decisions to make. For ourselves for the annual report. So as a group of select board members, we can talk about those contributions.
Assignments with a time report. Thank you, Jenna. Thanks for the workload. I think, Mark, you just had your finger up about something else.
Yes, I would like to take a moment to amend our motion on the people selected. Approved for the budget committee because I have an email from, from Shelley, Shelley Martin, who's the. Executive Director of PAWS and also I believe is the Chair of.
That's Shelley Butler.
Butler.
Shelley Butler.
Sorry, Butler, not Martin Butler. I used to know somebody named Shelley Martin, used to work with him. And she's expressed interest in being on the budget committee. So I'd like to add her to the list with a new vote. And then I will reach out to her and, and, and double check to see if she wants to be in.
Allison.
Um, that's great because we've received word that Dick Crossman would like to wait for a different time and to do this and not this time. And, but I have good news that Pamela, Pamela Gleason, who is Camden resident and landkeep architect. Would be happy to serve a one-year term, so.
What was the first part of your statement?
No to Dick Crossman, yes to Pamela Gleason.
Okay.
Okay.
And I will write that all down. I stand a sending something asking to write this all down. I have all of these for me that I've been asking for. Because of our kind of hiccup this year, I only ask people to serve one year terms.
I think that's what we have to do, Allison. Actually, one year is fine.
Okay.
So, so the amendment is, Mark, go ahead.
To add Shelley Butler to the approved budget committee person list.
And to remove Dick Crossman and also add Pamela Gleason now.
Okay.
If that works for everyone. Second.
Okay, motion made. Second discussion vote, Jenna.
Aye.
Aye.
Allison.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
And Bob is an aye. That's five zero. Thank you for that update on the Budget Committee of the Moment Club. The, just joking.
Not the way Bob likes to do things, but thanks for bearing with us.
We're moving fast, let's face it. To manage the report, Audrey, go ahead.
Um, so the Siemens project has officially begun. If any of you have been around the building lately, you'll probably notice that Glenn Govey has camped out in the Washington street. Or the, sorry, French conference room. He's supposed to be up in the Tucker Room, but unfortunately there's no heat up there, so. Anyone who came by today would have seen Glenn hanging out in the French room. He's, you know, just beginning the process of, you know, getting everything sort of. Sequenced in terms of projects. I think they've already ordered the lighting to do the lighting upgrades on all the buildings. You know, he's meeting with all the different department heads that manage the facilities to go over schedule of what's being done and when. And also sort of nailing down the scope of work for some of the bigger projects where there was. You know, more work to be done on that for, you know, like the geothermal system at the Snowball. So that project is off and, and going right now.
They actually started working the library.
Yes. Yep, on the HVAC system.
Yep.
So Jeff Scott developed really great website content around complete streets and advisory lanes. So within the next week or so, this is all dependent on the time I have available. In getting all the information out for the budget. I'm going to create pages under the Public Works Department website to include this information because. I think it's, Jeff did a great job in pulling together content. It's all incredibly in line with the work that we're doing. On pedestrian safety and, you know, the, the planning work that we're doing to try to upgrade our road infrastructure. In a way that's more accessible for pedestrians and cyclists. And I would just say the, you know, the majority of, you know, the, the past month and definitely last week and, and this coming week. Is just work on the budget. So we finalized the actual budget and now I'm, you know, working on getting all the narrative information. And it's going to be a little bit different this year. We wanted to try to do a presentation format that translated a little bit better on Zoom. So I'm asking all of the department heads to do PowerPoint presentations where they're kind of going over. You know, an explanation of their department, what, you know, who are the staff, what do they do? What are the services that they provide or activities or programs that they do? You know, are there any notable successes from the current financial year that they would like to talk about? Because it sort of brings into context some of the decisions that the budget committee might have made and what was the outcome? And also going over changes in the FY twenty-two budget. Because I think that, you know, the budget committee is just as much about. You know, educating committee members on municipal services and how everything sort of fits together in the. You know, the broader picture of, you know, what local government does within the town. So we really want to focus on that part of it in a way that's, you know, more Zoom friendly. So that's kind of like a big push to get a lot of that stuff done and together in time for the budget workshops or the budget committee meetings. And another thing, I just wanted to sort of clarify confusion around the tannery planning account. So for the purpose of not having to have this conversation and go back and forth about this a lot. We were asked a few years ago by Coastal Mountain Land Trust to take over money that they had had an account for. And it was tannery related. And the town agreed to do it on the proviso that it wasn't a fundraising account. It would be a planning account for any potential work that needed to be done on the tannery. And it was not supposed to be like a catch-all for fundraising. And the fact that that account exists at all, I think is creating a lot of confusion. What my next step is going to be to mitigate the fact that it's creating confusion is to. Work with Coastal Mountain Land Trust to find the original donors to that account, send all the money back to them and then close it. Because I don't want to have to keep having the conversation around, is that money for playground equipment? On an eventual tannery park when it was never set up for that purpose? Or is it for planning and what does that mean? So in order to, you know, kind of stop wasting time around that discussion. We're going to return those funds and close that account.
And the amount of money that account is?
About five hundred dollars.
Thank you. Okay, anything else, Audrey?
That's it.
Allison, you had a question?
No.
Okay, on to select board reports. Mr. Mark.
Not much today. I just wanted to mention this was a good, good day in Knox County. We had no new COVID cases. Reported yesterday, which is great, but still, you know, as vaccinations come along, please be safe, please wear your mask. We passed, unfortunately, we, the United States passed a half a million people that have died from COVID in the last year, which is really sad. And everybody in this town, I would like to see healthy and long-lived. So please be careful.
Allison, anything?
I just wanted to note that I've received a lot of emails and interest about the. Natural gas expansion project, a number of. City councillors and select board members from neighboring towns have contacted me and I think probably others. As well. I see this is a, a pretty big issue. And I know there's been discussion about hopefully getting some more information of the select board meeting pretty soon. But when you go on their Summit's website and you look at the, the plans that they have. It sort of involves digging up most of the roads in Camden and putting in natural gas. And I have a lot of concerns about what that means for some of our other projects. And the complications of trying to coordinate work with utilities, which already is fairly complicated with. You know, private water company and then all of the CMP pulls. And then just the larger question of whether the natural gas expansion project fits in with. You know, the recommendations of the main climate council and some of the town's energy goals. To me, it seems like a really great opportunity for the energy. Conservation-minded people in the community and maybe some of the energy committee members. Conservation-minded people in the community and maybe some of the energy committee members to be working. More regionally, because there are these, Rockland has an, an energy committee. We have an energy committee. There are all these people. In the community that are maybe just, just interested in, in this particular project. So there is an effort kind of happening right now to try to figure out who the point people should be. And how this cross-town communication could happen. I believe that Rockland City Council is having a special. Meeting, maybe tonight. To discuss.
Last night.
Or was it last night?
Yeah.
So. I guess I'm, I'm getting so many emails at this point that I, I'm not usually the best organizer. Of things, but trying to find, I don't know what the town's. Level of town staff getting comments about this is, or if we want to at some point. Direct our energy committee to work with other energy committees. But I guess for the time being, my central message would be that if, if.
Right.
For people that are interested, I would be happy to forward emails that, and some of the emails that I've gotten from some of the people. That are really involved. Nate Davis in Rockland has been writing about this. I believe Marina Schofler here in Camden, who's no longer an energy committee member, but really knowledgeable. She's. Has an article coming out soon. But I have all kinds of emails from people that are working in different places. If anybody wants more information. In the public or select board, they could.
We'll be probably addressing that in March meeting as far as Summit goes for some presentation discussion to get the ball rolling. That doesn't affect your email questions, but I wanted to mention that too.
And then the only other quick thing.
Yeah, go ahead.
Maybe Audra was going to bring up, but the, the watershed school art. Class is interested in doing a public education, public art and education. Project surrounding climate change and community resiliency and endangered species. And so they, as everybody knows, they have a, a great program over there and they kind of walked around town and. Looked for some opportunities for where they might be able to do some kind of an, an art installation. And they thought that the, as of right now, the public landing bathrooms would be a great place to maybe put some wooden. They could either paint right on the building or they could do some, maybe some wooden panels that could be. Attached, but they, you know, they have a, a great art teacher heading it up. And it seemed like a, a good opportunity for, for us to be able to say yes to that kind of thing. With, with low risk. My thought when they ran it by me was that it would. The select board would probably be pretty supportive of that kind of thing. But I just wanted to bring that up. Audra, I don't know if you.
Thank you.
Agree with Allison.
Really quickly, Allison, I'd like to see the emails that you have on the natural gas.
Oh, great. Maybe you could be the point person.
There you go.
I don't know that I want to do that, but I'd like to see what you got.
Taylor, do you have anything?
Uh, no, not tonight. Thanks, Bob.
Ms. Jenna.
I am all set. I would like to see the emails as well. Your, let's see her emails.
Okay.
Joking, joking.
Just a side note, my part, I have this week started looking, trying to do what we've done before and do a. A look at how our solar plant at Sagamore is operating in terms of efficiency and I'll have that for the next.
That brings up a question. Where are we looking for the solar stuff we were. So excited about a while back. I haven't heard any updates about that.
Mark, quickly, Jeremy, just talk about Knox and then we're going to go on.
Yeah, really quick, Mark. We're moving forward. We're waiting for a proposal and we're, the Knox County project that they're working at, at the airport. It's very likely that we have a very good opportunity to sign into that project. We would likely be the largest. Participating entity in that's moving forward. I just met with Revision and Knox County Airport folks. Two weeks ago on that. So that's moving forward.
Cool.
And before, before we bring it to a, to a, who's like to see how that compares with the other proposals.
Of course, of course.
Go ahead, Mark.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn the select board for this evening.
I'm so surprised it came from you. Anyhow, thank you, Mark. Taylor seconds, a discussion. None, roll call vote, Jenna.
Aye.
Allison.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Bob, aye, and I presume you're okay with that too, Audra.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
I know you're listening. Thank you all. Next couple of months are going to be a lot of fun and very busy.
Night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
All right.